Ted, the big one actually came through correctly. I had no complaints.
Maybe someday I can do something.
The big one.
Now I gotta go back through the training paddock again.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say that for change. There is a reason it was at the bottom.
I just because we have a point to get through quickly.
You should have one in there that requires an extra signature.
Yeah, Scott forgot to sign it again.
Yep.
I'm just keeping you honest.
Okay. All right.
One minute. Norm is in my shop. Getting some stolen stuff and talking a little bit of paving and even though with the price of oil and stuff, he mentioned, he said, if we get our act together early, maybe you can add it to the same existing contract.
Do we do all?
No, but for rates for more.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought that was good. Okay, let's get, let's get started. Why don't we start with online identifying themselves?
Devtangway, town bookkeeper.
Oh. David Barlow, treasurer, over.
Then that's you, David Gallup.
Yes.
Is there anybody else on there?
Phil Marquette, so we'll go through.
Hi.
My name's Marie Joseph, Marie Joseph Sloan, only been 10 years.
We've flown.
We're just doing introductions.
Yep.
President.
I'm pretty kind of new resident.
David Dry. Then Callowtown Administrator.
Phil Marquette, select board.
Scott Breyer, select board.
I think that's his name.
Randy Dry.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting November 1st, 2021 to order at 6:02. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
I think we should move public comment up to after number five.
I'd like to add two executive sessions for personnel with the select board only.
Do we want to make those like 12 D and E?
Sure. Let's make them like 14 to 15.
14.
Well, 12 works because public comments moved up.
Yeah, so.
We had 12 D and E. Okay. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
No, so we went through this executive session thing once. Are we able to do it that way?
It should be worn correctly, but.
I, that's.
It would not be proper to make a decision to discuss things.
Okay.
And then come back out and say.
No decision. And then warn it next meeting? Okay, all right. Get a whatever ball started. So we have to make a motion to change these?
No, it's.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move right on to number three, appointment of Marie Salon to the Coventry Fire District.
Dom had hoped to be here. I'm surprised he isn't here, but Marie has graciously offered an email which is in your package. It says she'd love to be a member of the Coventry Fire Department. As I think you've proven, we saw that there's a form, there's many.
I could use the topic by.
If you served on this safety, you're a safety activist.
Like 2012 or 13 until.
Post this any time or can we go on?
Does anybody else having a hard time hearing Ned?
Yeah, we're a little bit further away. We. I'm gonna.
He's gonna fix it right now. Do you know, Ned, do we need to post this letter or is it something we can make a decision on?
Make a decision. That's all.
Yeah, a lot of interest and then we can appoint.
Nice.
According to.
Spoken to Dominic about the appointment and so was Marie, so there should be no problem.
Okay, so I make a motion that we accept Marie Salon's request of being a part of the fire district. All those in favor?
Do a discussion.
A discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor?
I. David Iron, I.
Opposed.
Yep, make sure you. Note that in a minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ned, can you let me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on, appointment of. David.
Okay, you gotta turn that.
That working any better?
Is that any better for people to hear?
Yeah, I can hear now.
Okay, can you talk again, David? So you can turn yours up a little bit, Ned.
You talking to me or Barlow?
There we go. We just can barely hear either one of you. I'm just trying.
I'm just turning this one off.
All right, test, test. Go ahead, David Gallup.
Yep.
All right, I can hear. Try that one. Be rid of the echo. Yeah. Sorry, I'm trying something new.
Okay. Okay, moving on, number four, appointment of forgive the pronunciation printed Menon to the planning commission. Is that close?
So this is, there's, are there two physicians?
Two physicians.
Is Mr. Prenon there?
Yes, he is here.
So my apologies, sir. I, I don't know who you are. I was wondering if you could tell where you lived and how long you've been here. I see you're on, I see you're on the foundation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yep. All right. So I'm from New Menon, and I moved to Coventry in May of this year. We moved, my wife and I live in Alabama. Spent the last 20 years working as an engineer program for several different things in the defense industry. Most recently worked for the Army and the Air Force running multi-billion dollar programs. Now retired and setting up my farm up in Airport Road. So I'm at the time, I'm driving, and I want to be involved in our community, so that's why I'm putting my name.
So where do you live on Airport Road, sir?
You know where Lawson's house was?
Oh, you bought Mark's old house? You bought Mark Lawson's place?
That's the one.
Okay, yeah, and your wife works at the hospital.
That's correct. I believe our wives know each other.
Yeah, okay.
One thing, the chapman says that pretty did help with the, also helped with the Fall Festival.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other discussion? I don't. I make a motion that we point printing Menon to the planning commission.
One second.
All those in favor?
I. I.
Well, congratulations. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, thanks. We appreciate it. Appointment of Zach Partridge to the planning commission.
David, is this the Zach that used to work for you? It does.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's home yet.
Is he still working for you?
Just in the winter.
Okay. He has a letter here in front of us, David. I don't know if you have, you have this email with his letter?
Yes, I've seen it.
Okay. It's raised in the village. I think it's raised in the village, right, Dave?
He lives in the post office. He owns the post office at home.
This has been posted long enough and we have all the rewrite requirements? Does anybody have any discussion on Zach Partridge? So these two are, it's Sue. I make a motion that we nominate Zach Partridge to the planning commission. Do I have a second? One second, that. All those in favor?
Opposed.
A second. Well, we're in a discussion. So now, any discussion? You got anything?
I thought you had seconded it. No, I've already.
You usually do it that way and then you do a.
Yeah, I thought you had seconded it already. I'm good.
What about your question?
So my question is, these appointments are only until town meeting day, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor? I.
I.
Anybody there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear us, David? This is so much worse. I'm trying to fix that.
Anybody there?
Yes, we're here, David. What's your vote?
Are you muted?
No.
Do you take out a speaker? Turn yours up a little bit, Ned. Does that work? Yeah, of course. Okay, all right, I'm gonna shut this off and pull that speaker back over here. I think it'll be better. Yep.
Hello?
Yes, David.
Can you hear us, Dave? Did you pick it up the speaker?
I don't know what's going on. No, my speaker's still on. I was trying to, I muted myself and I can't hear anything.
Can you hear us?
No.
No.
Yeah, we can, we can hear you. What's the, is it stars, what's the number combination? I have no idea.
It's star six nine maybe? Maybe star six nine, but I don't have access to that. Be able to run real close.
Oh, he's not muted. Yeah, but he's also a full. Why don't you hang up this dial line? If that works. Usually have this much trouble.
Deb, you can hear us, right? I'm gonna ask the school, have they, oh, they have Google.
For a little bit, you guys actually sounded pretty echoey.
Yeah, I was just trying something. It didn't go so well. Just.
So everybody who's on via internet, well, Martha's on the phone, isn't she?
Okay, admit, admitting.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Sometimes you just gotta unplug it and plug it back in, I guess.
That's my first question to tell anybody. Unplug it and plug it back in and power it up and turn it back on. They go, why is it that easy?
David, you made your vote for the Zach Partridge appointed to the planning commission.
Or discussion, we're on discussion. Right?
Have we approved that you and I voted on it?
Yeah, what's your vote on Zach Partridge, David?
Opposed. I've already spoken with him. I just want to stay consistent in my, however.
Okay.
He's a good addition.
Okay, moving on, discussion regarding drainage of 299 Main Street and neighboring properties.
Very strange issues of its interest in changing of the property. 299 Main Street. This is that need. And Dave Barlow, I know spoke to me today and wanted to address a couple of things and speak to this issue.
I can't hear Ned. Can anybody else?
Try, try.
Can you hear me now, David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, repeat that.
Dave Barlow. Tony Tangay asked to come back to this meeting to talk about drainage on his property. Dave Barlow spoke to me today and wanted to speak to this issue about a couple of different things. And we should give him some time to speak to this also.
So this is completely different from previous things, the water that's in here?
It's still basically a continuation of that with some additional ideas.
Okay, so this is including the letter for moving that there's one, the correct property. Okay. And David Barlow is going to speak on this?
Yeah, yes, he wished to speak on this.
Does Tony have anything before or not?
I can go through this and see.
Okay.
Might answer some of my questions. They may have some answers.
Yep. I guess it's you, Mr. Barlow.
Okay, I see the, the letter that was included in the select board packet. Has that letter been sent yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Did it have a date on it?
No, it did not have a due date on it.
It doesn't have a letter sent date either.
Did it have a letter sent date on it?
Negative.
Yes, but it had a, a, a sign for it, you know, registered mail. So we have the day it was delivered and the day it was mailed and the day it was received.
So what dates are we expecting this to be completed by?
It wasn't, there, there was not a completion date. It was essentially remove it immediately.
So has it been resolved? Has it been removed?
No, it has not.
So what action is the select board going to take?
Well, we went at the last meeting, we went over to their property site. Mr. Tangway had sloped the dirt from the building to the property line in a manner that looks, I think, looks the best that it could possibly look. Is there some extra dirt on the town property from the way that it's sloped from his building? Yes, absolutely. Is it? Is it an eyesore? No. If he cuts it straight from his building and keeps it flat and not any on the town's property, I think it'll probably not see well and would look worse, in my opinion. So as far as the removal of the dirt and earth that Mr. Tangway has put onto the town property from the construction or the redevelopment of his property, I personally feel that it, it looks fine. I, I think it looks better this way than if he takes it, cuts it down a quarter or two and the dirt's not on it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's doing any damage to the town property all the way it is, is at this point in time. That's my feeling. You went there too, Phil? Your, your feeling?
I feel the looks is fine. I guess where I'm worried is that wasn't ditch prior and I'm not sure if it affects anything later.
Did he ask permission from the town to do this?
He had come to David Gallup this spring. I'm not sure the full conversation of that and how it played out.
Are you aware of the multiple years of tax delinquency on all his parcels in the town? Did he ask permission for that as well? I, I guess I'm, I'm more than questioning the decision to be forgiving on this when this is just the pattern of take from the town.
Well, I guess the, the other way I have it, I, I do the opinion that it looks, it looks fine, but we did vote and send this letter and it was voted on. It's what happened, removed. I don't see anything other than us going back and reversing that motion that changes that and.
So I guess the letter went out without a date. So when is the enforcement date?
That's what we have to come up with. Yes.
So can I speak a little bit?
Yes, David, please.
So on that, you talk about the aesthetics of it. The aesthetics aren't our priority here. That's a ditch that's been closed. And for the record, it was brought to my attention that Ned's now over there putting pipes on Raymond Gerard's property. I don't know why we would do that. Did Raymond Gerard buy a property in a low lying area? With a ditch across it? Why are we impacting his property negatively? Why are we paying Ned O'Connell to go engineer something that's going to have a negative impact on the community and a negative impact on the Gerard's property? Icons of the community and how they maintain their property.
David, let's get my name correct. It's Ned Cunnell, not O'Connell, as you've said repeatedly. So let's get that correct. And I never said we were installing or doing any work to any person in this community at any time. I merely informed him that Mr. Tangway was proposing to move some pipes. It was under review by the select board. No decisions had been made and that the meeting was this evening.
Why would a, why would you move a pipe to a ditch that's been filled illegally?
David, I never said I was moving anything.
So, okay, hang on. I'm confused. I have no idea where we're going on this. What Tony was coming with or this?
This is part of what Tony was coming with that he had spoken about at the site thing.
Which was all the way on his side of the road, not on the other side.
No, he was talking about moving the two bulkheads, the drop basins down so it'd be a straight shot. Yeah.
There's, okay, so there's, there's that and then there's the letter which we were working on first. We need to come up with a due date for this against what has to happen. Is that what?
That's what David would, Barlow would prefer to act upon.
This is run by a lawyer, right?
Yes, it was.
What was that?
I asked if this letter was run by a lawyer and we gotta, I guess, we gotta come up with a new date for this letter.
Okay, so I have a one more question. If we're going to allow Mr. Tangway to illegally fill on our property and plug our ditches, are we going to allow Jim Cobb to fill in the ditch behind his property? Are we going to allow Rebecca in the church to do so? Are we going to allow all budding landowners to do whatever they want on our property or is this just for Mr. Tangway?
David, hang on. There's a letter.
What?
You're telling him to remove the dirt and to store the drainage to the, to the correct thing. There has been nothing said about reversing this letter. We're trying to discuss and come up with a due date for this letter at this point.
Okay.
That I don't know how to come up with.
Immediately is pretty obvious that it needs to be done. I've seen it.
I guess at some point, if it doesn't get done.
Doesn't get done.
We have to take the next step.
Next step would be to inform them it's not been done and that the town will remediate the situation at it, at it, at its own expense and send him the bill for that work.
And I'm just gonna clarify there. And, and we have this discussion that night. There are two things revealed, revealed about town property.
There's two things, but there's a, there's a third thing that everybody keeps avoiding and I think they kind of coincide together.
And, and the way they do, and I'll prove that is you have this letter to clear the ditch that's inside that runs along the property line. And then the next thing, which is still, we're gonna come up with this, is the basin that comes across the road and the dish that comes down into his property. The basin that comes across the road and the dish that comes down into his property and that's the next part of this question. So I think it's, I think immediately, I think I agree, immediately should happen and. But I probably shouldn't have a due date because then at that point it's only a date to go by. And then. But I do see where Tony said they kind of coincide because if you do any, if you want to do any, it's change or changes that basin. How does that work and because that niche feeds into our ditch that should be open.
The town doesn't have any ditch that's open.
Well, there wasn't ditch there previously, it's in the picture here.
Yeah, on my land that I I put there when I put the first building there.
Well, it it looks like. I'm going with my pick, I wish I would have gone down there and seen before it happened was. Where that.
The ditch was not on the town's property.
David, is that the case with the ditch on Tony's property or our property?
Which ditch are you talking about?
The ditch that runs down the current new building down the town line.
Excuse me just a minute. So where he filled is in part of that is that red line that I painted. Using his survey. The red line pretty much indicates where the fill is in the ditch.
That line is currently there or was there?
Yeah, I apologize, I can't hear a thing, Phil. I'm gonna call you, Phil.
I I can't hear anything yet, I keep hearing my name broken, okay, now I can hear, sorry, okay. So I I'm I'm a little confused about, maybe it's just because there was so much going on there, but. So this whole thing is about. A construction happening and then um there was. Um the road commissioner asked that there be some dirt removed from a ditch that. Was in question, that's what the last meeting, everybody went down, looked at the ditch scene where, you know, the stake lines were and stuff. And then there was an incomplete letter sent to the landowner. With no. Remediation, no sound. Anything? So is is that what what the whole discussion over the letter is?
No, we're we're talking about the property that was sent, not nothing. The letter that was brought up last last meeting was the letter that was attached. To the original email that Ned sent out was not correct, but it was correct that Tony, which he did resend it. However, there is no due date, that's what David Barlow was bringing up. It is being, it is discussing about there had been a ditch. Close to or on the line, this is what I was asking David Gallup was. That line, that painted line to the property line, was that the center of that ditch that was there before it turns into his or was that on the side?
The ditch was always on my property.
So that is basically the line that is drawn, that is the line uh based on Mister Tangway's survey.
Right, so I guess I guess where I'm going, we're talking about a ditch.
Correct, so when he filled over the line, he filled in the ditch, there is uh. There's four seasons in Vermont, not just summer. And that is a access road to our former uh. Um skating rink and we don't know down the road if that's going to be used again and we don't want that impacted.
I guess what I'm doing, because I'm trying to figure this out here. Is it, was it, do we know that it was on Tony's property? Or was it not? I don't know, so that's. But it's not there anymore. Right. The building's right at the edge and you sloped it away and it kind of, it's not, it's not defined anymore, for sure. So I guess that's. So my questions come from this. Apparently the ditch was on his property because now with it's no thing there and with it's backfill. The ditch is gone, so yeah, the ditch was definitely on one hundred percent on Tony's property.
The ditch that I put there when I built the first building.
And now it's it's filled in. Because you've put the building on your property and the ditches now, there's no room for the ditch to be there on your property with the building. Right on the property line where it was, basically. So that ditch isn't going to be there.
You can't put a ditch, can't put a ditch back, I should address this way back when I built the first building. You know, eighteen nineteen years ago. With with the with the town catch basin, they're discharged on my properties, it should have dealt with it.
So. Here's the issue is this. We can't tell him to restore that drainage ditch. If it was on his property, if he found to get the dirt off.
Dirt off of our property.
Right.
Or the portion of the ditch that's on. Yeah, okay.
I might have, I might have. Some solution, hopefully, I mean. It might not resolve it quickly, you know, as far as the overall project, but. I did call State of Vermont Stormwater people. And they said the town of Coventry should have a municipal road general permit, MGRP. And it requires the town to, it's the town's responsibility to control their stormwater discharge. And the guy set me a map. And this is Coventry's stormwater plan, and I think Sarah Damsel is the one that worked on it. Probably in favor of Coventry, she worked with the state. And all they have right now, I can give you a copy of it, this is Coventry's. And you got incomplete data, it does not meet, that's pretty much what they got so far, so. What the guy from the state said is there's lots of grants available for towns to help. Improve their their stormwater system and specifically for reasons like this or purposes like this, so. We can try and figure something out now or maybe the right, I don't know who's in charge of your. Your MRGP or you're working on or it's up to date, I'm not certain where it is, but there is grants available. Stuff like that to get taken care of, so there's, you know, might might not be a cost to the town, there's grants for it.
I'd like to speak to that, uh we have. We have gone through the multi-sector general permit and we've received probably the highest score in the state of Vermont as far as that goes. Basically, any incomplete data that you see on that. Will will uh go to uh roads where a decision couldn't be made. Whether we were in or out of compliance, I think we had like two little sections on High Acres Road. But as far as the uh multi-sector general permit, uh we, I believe we have the highest score in the state of Vermont on that. Are you talking to Jim Ryan?
I can't recall, I didn't write down his name.
Yeah, well, I'm not too worried about our permit, I mean, it's a. It's the template for the state, basically. The ditch line needs to be re uh. Reestablished, and it's just that simple.
I honestly don't know where to go with it because that ditch was not on our property.
Well. The ditch, where David drew that red line. Is on one side, what I would call one side of the ditch. Yeah, it's on, well, no, it's where Tony has filled. But I would say that ditch, the edge of that ditch is our property line, so the ditch comes off the road, snakes around and then runs. Parallel to the edge of his uh buildings. But where David drove that red line. That's the, that's the edge of the, that's the edge of our property and I would assume the edge of the ditch and the ditch can and should be fully restored. Because that water's got to get from Main Street. Across the land and into the the ditch that's on uh Route fourteen. Or or Route five, whichever number is appropriate out there.
So right now, is it really wet over there? It's like the water, I don't think they both are probably.
I mean, you know, this is. I've never seen a lot of water there, but.
We also have that culvert on. With the culvert that you installed. Temporarily or in between your two buildings, is that where all the drainage water is going at this time?
I would think so, that's what we're probably going now. We were worried if we didn't put something in and it just turned into a lake. In the in the existing ditch.
So with that current culvert that you put in there, that would suffice this ditch not being needed anymore.
I would say. As long as it, that that pipe goes all the way underneath the property and exits down at the town's, you know, the state's right of way into. An established drainage way. And but I have to say, my, in my opinion, not as an engineer, that's like a twelve inch culvert. I do not think twelve inches is sufficient for that location.
Well, you could tell right now with the rain we had the last two days, if it's not all soggy and it's not. It's not water there. It's like, if there's no water there, it's working fine, right? I have a lake in my there.
There are four seasons in Vermont. We have a roadway that goes to our um, as I said, to our old skating rink, we don't know down the road, five years from now, two years now, if that's going to be reestablished. By plugging that ditch. You were putting our property in jeopardy. Once again, if we're going to allow Mister Tangway to do that, are we going to allow other landowners to plug ditches? And negatively impact the drainage in the town that desperately needs it?
But what I'm saying is, if Mister Tangway takes off the dirt and put on our, on the town's property. I do not believe the ditch is going to be restored. Just by taking the dirt off, he's only going to take the dirt off our property, he's going to leave the dirt on his property and it's just going to be. Kind of a mess, um but I, but yeah, I also see where he has taken time to put that culvert in. To take care of that water that's supposed to go to the ditch.
That was a solution I gave him in Mr. Gobey. When they wanted to dig a massive ditch across our property.
And he's done so. Does the ditch? Come back if he's keeping that culvert there. Well, he doesn't have to put the ditch back, he has to, you know, at this point in time, if the town is requesting the soil. So the problem is, is it's in this letter, it's going to ditch. And that's where I'm going with this is. The ditch was on his property, he's put a culvert in to remedy the problem of filling the ditch in.
The part of the ditch that is filled in is the part that's on town property. The rest, the entire.
I've never filled any ditch over the town's property.
I guess that's.
Incorrect, if incorrect, if you look at the red line based on your survey. That's where you put the fill.
Was the ditch on the same end?
Is it on what?
Okay, well, I guess that's, yeah, we physically trying to, I'm trying to understand, like. You can't tell from pictures, I didn't see it beforehand to see where that line went, if that line was straight down the center of the ditch, straight down, if you're looking forward to five, it went down the center of the ditch. Went down the right hand side on the upper side or went down the left hand side on the upper side.
I always, I always mow that ditch. The ditch, the ditch was entirely, the ditch was entirely on my.
Mowing to me is, I I mow part of my neighbor's property. But if that line was on the upper side or the left hand side of the ditch, the ditch in my mind was not in our property.
But if you're, if you're facing eastward towards the state highway. The ditch, from what I saw and what you can see in the pictures. You know, the upper edge of the ditch was at the property line.
Whichever edge, on the right hand side or the left hand side?
The right hand side, facing.
That's the question I've been asking.
Yeah, facing away from Main Street, which will be.
It was on the building on his property side, the line on that ditch, you have the ditch like this, his property's over here.
The ditch is entirely on my property because if it's on the town's property, it would still be there.
That's, that's incorrect, that is incorrect, the red line that David drew up there clearly shows that most, once that ditch turns and heads eastward.
Right.
The right hand, the upper right hand side of the ditch would be in the town's property.
That's what I had to pay attention to when I went down the other night, was to figure out to see how far that ditch came, if that started curling in before the property line. Because you've got two things, you've got the property line and you have the ditch.
Right.
We don't know if the ditch was actually on the property line or not.
I, you don't know, how do you? I I'm just.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. Know if that ditch was on.
Yeah, they don't know. We don't know, it could, yes, but the dirt, but the dirt should be removed because it was, you know, incorrectly marginally misplaced.
I understand the dirt being removed from our property, the ditch is the. Problem that we have no proof either way. On if it, whose property it was on, if it's. If it was on town property, yeah, if you have it restored, I can understand, but if it was on his property. You can't say anything.
There's, there's a simple solution to this. Somebody with a shovel, go out there, dig at the grass line, if he's filled, there'll be grass, you know, several inches to a foot under rain. It'll be clearly obvious where. Things were, then you could just dig a small trench and find out exactly where things are, then shoot a, you know, laser, minor or string.
I guess I'm still trying to figure out where, what, or spring, where to make time, in my opinion. I I'm thinking that culvert that's there is sufficient for the ditch and just pour the dirt off of our property. I don't see where it's going to cause an issue with the access road or the skating. Unless that ditch was made to pull water off of our property, but. The way I see it here, that's to divert the water coming off of that basin down over the roof.
Right, and it is David's right, the access road to the skating, it would take some drainage from there. Would it, would it be thirty or forty percent now, or five, or like ten or twelve percent, something like that, some small amount, but. Mister Tangway should not be filling onto town property, David's.
I agree with that one, no, I agree.
They should remove it and reestablish the ditches.
That's where I'm having the issue. When he takes the dirt off the town property.
I don't understand why you're having an issue, we have a. A budding landowner who illegally filled on our property.
We have illegally filled by putting dirt on our property, we have two separate things, we have a fill onto our property, we have a ditch. Nobody can prove where that ditch was, and three, everybody keeps getting that I have the issue with.
Why are, why are we, why are we um even having this discussion? To be truthful with you, why are we allowing somebody to illegally fill on taxpayer bought property? Why are we going to put ourselves in a situation where we have to ask a landowner what we can do on our property? Why are we going to put ourselves in a terrible situation down the road? When other people say, you know what, Tony got to do that, why can't I? And how are you going to tell those people they can't? Tell me how you were going to make an exception here and not for everybody else in the town that abuts that property.
I don't disagree with the. Fill on our property, what I. And trying to understand, which nobody has an answer for, is the ditch. It goes back to.
Doesn't matter, it wasn't a, it wasn't a perceived ditch, it was just uh what you would call sheathing under your multi-sector general permit. It was a slope. And you filled in the slope and now you, now water isn't going to go down through there. And when the snow starts coming off the road and the spring, off his roof in the spring, you're going to have troubles. Once again, why are we allowing somebody to fill on taxpayer bought property?
I'm wrong, I I. Okay.
Martha's got a hand up, yes.
Hi, so I I I guess I'm, I I kind of agree with everybody's point of view here somewhat. Um but I'm still trying to figure out. Um so the ditch, our our road commissioner is saying he's not. Really, can't really do anything about the ditch, and if it was, it would, you would have to reestablish it. So I I I'm kind of, it's kind of like a moot point there and then. Um if Mister Tangway illegally filled, he needs to remove it, that's not rocket science, you have your road commissioner and your zoning administrator saying that. But the thing that concerns me the most out of all of this. But the thing that concerns me the most out of all of this is a letter was sent to a resident with no dates, a certified letter, which means that you're trying to say it's legal and binding. With no dates, no timeline, no specific request. And no further action taken. So I think this is like a multi-layered problem here that doesn't really need to be a multi-layered problem. And we have people speaking out of turn. And this is the bad business and bad aesthetics that people are so turned off about. I think if you wanna reestablish a ditch, that's what you do. If you're gonna send a letter, then you send it the legal binding way. And stop wasting people's time and and fueling fires that don't need to be there. And I appreciate the road commissioner and I appreciate everybody. That's just my opinion, trying to unify this town and trying to understand. And I've sat here multiple times and I still don't understand.
Thank you, Martha. So I think what needs to happen today. Mr. Tangway's here, so we don't really need to send another letter, but I would say this letter needs to be corrected. So, okay, there's no.
You have to send a written letter if you are gonna, if it's gonna be further court action. There has to be in writing. You are a government agency. Everything needs to be in writing with dates on it.
Yeah, but we have to follow up. We can determine. How we're gonna resolve this this evening, and then we can do the proper paperwork and follow up. What we can request, I believe, is Mr. Tangway to restore the drainage ditch as we see in photo one and two. If it's not on the town's property, that's not the issue. I guess what we're gonna ask Mr. Tangway to do is to remove the earth. That he's placed on the town's property, any dirt that was placed on the town's property. And now on the other discussion is, that Mr. Tangway brought to our attention, is the ditch that crosses the road that goes on to his property.
So you guys have two issues with me, but I have an issue with you guys, because you guys are discharging your stormwater onto my property.
Let's deal with that in a different meeting once Mr. Tangway reestablishes.
This is the whole reason we have this, like, visit request at the meeting to discuss it tonight. If someone's gonna go there to do site work, I'd like to be, go there one time and complete it, be done, bold, seated, done and over with.
As far as the drainage coming across the main road, wasn't that drainage there when you bought the property, Mr. Tangway?
Or my.
Yeah, I mean, so you bought a property knowing that what the situation was. I really, I was really impressed with your initial development of that property. I thought that was a great use. I really think you're having a negative impact on your neigh, on the neighbors in the community by trying to grow more there. That's just my personal opinion, but, you know, you're a hard worker. Um, you're looking at a man in that seat right there, Raymond Dryard, has worked forty-seven years at that mill, and. He's retired and he don't deserve to have his property devalued anymore. Just my personal opinion.
I will send a new letter with a date and a due date of two weeks from, let's just say, two weeks from tomorrow. So it can be cleaned up this season for, for us. Is two weeks from now Dave Gallup sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, he can just throw some, if it's too steep, he can just throw some juke matting. I've got some extra.
Okay, so regarding the ditch that crosses the main road. And funding from NTRP or the grant authority, however that works. I guess I I'm not.
Well, my problem is the town's water is discharged with a problem. You know, and then start taking care of it or maintaining whatever might need to be done in town's stormwater.
I guess I need to talk, I don't have an answer. It's the town's responsibility for a pre-existing property that already had.
Well, when I talked to the state, they said that's why these grades are out there, because they specifically said that it's a town responsibility to control the discharge. And that was just grants out there. So when you have a town catch basin, and it's coming out of the town catch basin, it has to be controlled. It just can't go wherever it wants to go.
But it was controlled until you tried to develop your property that you thought. It was under control as long as nobody ever did anything with the land. And I guess what I need to see is.
Correct, correct, correct.
And I guess what.
As long as nobody ever did anything with the land, but there again, it goes down to, why should some, just, why can some landowner not do what they want with their property? Because somebody else is discharging onto it. It's almost the same thing. Dave doesn't want anything going on on his land, but it's vice versa to my land.
Right, and I agree, and I think it just.
That's, there's some, that's where.
There's some information that we need to get. But when I talked with state guys, that there's, you know. You know, I I didn't, he wasn't specific with the site. He could only see what was on here. But, you know, I explained to him if there was another catch, and I'm not on dry property at all. There's already a catch basin on that side of the road.
So I'd like to, I'd like to have the name of that state worker, because I'd like to blast him. I'd like to take that multi-sector general permit that the town of Coventry has, which is exemplary, and stuff it up his butt. Um, we are, I mean, we are the template for the state. We are a very difficult town as far as controlling water, and we have the highest scores in the state of Vermont. And if Jim Ryan wants to come to a meeting and have a showdown with me, you bring him on, because I'll burn him.
David is correct. Our scores are very high.
Right. A very good example, the town's stormwater catch basin that discharges on my property, the culvert where it comes out of it, is about twelve to sixteen inches lower than the ditch. When we saw it that night, here's the catch basin. We had to take it out to find it. It was, it was literally buried. I mean, I don't, maybe there was nothing ever coming out of it. I'm not sure. Right. It's definitely that ditch hasn't, you know, hasn't been, it's being discharged and hasn't been properly maintained, and it's, you know, completely submerged.
There's actually quite a bit of water that'll go into that, because the state of Vermont doesn't do as good a job as controlling their water under the multi-sector general permit. If you were to come down from Royer's Mini-Mark during a rainstorm. You will see six inches of water in each of those wheel tracks and every bit of it, town of Coventry has to catch. So maybe you could approach them and tell them to take care of their problems, and that might positively impact you, but. Um, as far as that goes, all that water is coming into those two catch basins on that side of that road. And ninety-nine percent of that water is from poor performance of AOT and maintaining those wheel tracks.
So those wheel tracks are maintained by AOT, not the town of Coventry?
You're talking on a new line, right?
Yeah, it's the one.
Correct. If you come down from Royer's Mini-Mark during a rainstorm. And you're not hydroplaning, then you're not going for over five miles an hour. And then all that water comes barreling into our village. So if the state of Vermont would like to weigh in, I would tell them to pay attention to their roads first.
So let's figure out.
So this line is going to be exactly, exactly the way it is?
With a due, with a date and a due date of nominally November fifteen, sixteen, something like that.
Basically, it's just gonna state to remove the dirt.
Dirt that is on the town property.
Not the ditch.
Not, nothing to do with ditch. It'll just be removed, the dirt that was placed onto town property.
The dollar clearly stated ditch. That's what I was going after.
If you, if you remove all the dirt that's on the town property, the ditch, if it was on town property, will reappear. And if the ditch doesn't reappear like in the photo, then guess what? It wasn't on the town property. Um, as far as. Drainage dips coming across and under the road onto your property, and if there's grants about having that moved and how that looks like, that's something we're gonna have to look into.
It needs to be engineered or something, so.
And they're unbelievably competitive, and essentially, we would be so far devilish, but I will look into it.
So, and then again, where would that go? Then would that go? Where does it go? Is this ditch, is this drain that he put already across his property, maybe? Straight or it's moved down or nothing happened? I mean, what?
We'd have to go to a whole study with the property owners, the neighbors, and figure out exactly who, what, where, how to, you know.
My, my proposal, we did the initial site, but if Dave was there, John Loeb was there, was to put another catch on the, there's already a catch basin on my side of the road. And my proposal was to put catch basin pretty much right at the edge of the town line, connect that one to that one and run culvert down the town property. David, David did, you know, he probably didn't want to put that cost to the town in favor of that idea. But when the state guys said there's grants out there, then it's, you know, a little more doable if there's states paying for it.
Right, and I, and I'm new to this, so I don't know whose responsibility it is. Like, can I, I'm, I mean, if there's grants out there, I'm not sure if the responsibility is the town to.
Well, it's definitely the town, but the grants are for municipalities. They're not for, you know, for the town's stormwater. They're not for individuals.
Yeah, but the town has no responsibility to move an existing ditch that's been there for nominally a hundred years or more.
Well, let's find that out.
Yeah, that, that's what Brian said. We have no obligation. He's better not to move the ditch.
But the, the, the state clearly states it's called mitigation. You know, that's, that's what the grant money's for. That's to make improvements when there's problem areas. To improve on problem areas. It's, you know, it isn't just replace something that's working good.
You've thrown out the word mitigation several times. Can you define it?
That's what the state told me. Minigate is to fix issues.
Yeah, and it is. It's moving, crossing out of the road and exiting the right of way in a safe and controlled manner. That's what it's doing. It's done it for a hundred years, continuing to do it until you put dirt in the ditch.
All right, we're gonna get, all we're gonna do, Tony, is we're gonna get another letter out to you. We're gonna ask you again to remove the dirt on the town property on that side of the building. Ned is gonna reach out to the town attorney and also to the state to see how we should proceed. They're coming to us with a request, and I think we should see what we can do to, that makes sense to the, for the town to. You know, to honor your request and see what can take place.
I just have one question, though. This kind of goes back to David Barlow. Is at the last meeting, you looked, we went out in the rain, we looked at it. I mean, I don't, I thought there was, you two had voted on leaving the slope the way it was, and Dave was against it. So I thought you'd already.
Oh, anything that can be.
Or you didn't.
No votes.
But we, we tabled it for tonight, too.
There was expressions of opinion, but no vote on what the town's direction or the staff direction should be.
I know personally, by you removing the dirt. I, I don't feel it. My personal, if we're gonna vote, well. I don't think he's gonna vote, no.
No, it doesn't. You just need to.
Well, I think you need to vote for, depending on whether, but I personally agree he shouldn't have put dirt on the town property, but I agree. With Mr. Tangway, when he removes the dirt, the aesthetics of it being gone, or the town appearance, the property line are gonna look worse than it looks right now.
Would Jim Cobb's property look better if he filled in the wetland behind him and grew a lawn?
Again, we're not voting on anything that changes this.
Yeah.
I think we need to vote to put it, make the changes that you're talking about.
Sure.
I'm gonna motion, make a motion to, to have to make, to send an amended letter. With a due date. And what was the rest?
Due date. And remove, reestablish the dish, just remove the dirt from, the dirt from town property.
I'll make that motion. The date will be two weeks out from.
The due date would be two weeks from tomorrow.
David, you want to second that or not?
Have we approved the letter?
It's, it's, yes, I made a motion to send an amended letter with a due date on it and removing the bullet that says restore drainage ditch.
So moved.
Any discussion? I'm taking it out, David.
We can have it.
All in favor? I.
I.
You both, both know.
Now? Okay.
Okay, so. We'll be in touch with you and we'll ask you to come back in when Ned has some information from the state and what we think we can get together. And, uh. Want to improve.
So it's good.
Thank you.
Yes, I did that with the other one also.
Number seven. Ready to your question, Martha?
Uh, Ned's crackling in and out, so I can't really hear him. That's why I keep asking the questions.
Send them to the lawyer before he sends them out.
If you sent them to the lawyer before you sent them out, how did Ned send that letter to Mr. Tangway?
I printed it, put it in an envelope with a return receipt, you know, registered letter, return receipt request.
Brian Monahan would have never told you to send a letter with no dates, no timelines, and no actual specifics. I, I know Brian, he would not have agreed for you to send that letter certified.
We'll make sure it's done.
Okay, moving on. Recommendation from the planning commission to select the friends group to conduct the village sidewalk scope studies.
We've got two proposals in, one from Otter Creek Engineering and one from DeFresne, DeFren Group, excuse me. And the planning commission has recommended that we go with contracting with the DeFren Group. The Otter Creek, both proposals were good, solid proposals, but the Otter Creek one was nearly fifty thousand. We have a budget of approximately thirty-five thousand. And the DeFren Group met our budget guidelines and did the same quality of work. And they've done many of these studies of this sort throughout the state.
What is the total amount of our scoping study?
It's approximately thirty-five thousand, David.
Thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty. What was the grant, thirty-five?
It was thirty, well, by the time it ends up being thirty-six, by the time you added local matches and some other stuff.
Amazing how they come so close on their bid to the price of the grant.
Yeah, all, all of the, yeah, they're, all of the awards are on the state website, so they, they know what we have before they even put in a bid.
The other one came in at fifty thousand, this one came in where we don't, where it comes in with the grant. David, did you see the, see it from the email?
Did I see what?
The one from DeFrain?
Yeah, I'm seeing that, I don't have the one from Otter Creek in front of me.
Yeah, I don't think he sent the one from Otter Creek, neither. But he said Otter Creek was around fifty grand.
Yeah. It's only gonna cost us a hundred bucks, so whatever.
Okay, you need a motion?
Let me, I could throw a quick question on this, if it's still on the table.
Go ahead.
This is David Barlow, the, I hear mention of a grant, we have a grant for this, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
And who's the grant from?
The Trans.
Okay, and. Have we received any paperwork on the grant?
Yes, we have a contract with them, it was sent out and we can sign copies back over state. If we don't, the signed contract is in, in my office.
This came in. It's been a long time.
Oh, it's been, you know.
Just as you or before you came on.
Yeah, Amanda got the grant for us, about the same time she got the church one and.
Okay.
Cause I remember she turned the signing power over to me and tell Ned was her appointed as administrator.
I'll give you my dazed and confused look, okay, I'm gonna need the paperwork then, thanks, over.
Okay, I'll get it to you, David.
It was awarded November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Are we voting on the. Whether to accept the proposal?
Correct.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I made the motion to accept it, accept the DeFrain Group proposal.
It's been seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It should be the one at the top, I think, Scott, is the weather vane.
Nice, okay. Number eight, consideration of proposal for a weather vane on Elijah Cleveland Meeting House, formerly the Coventry Convention of Church. So we all. David, you sent us a nice picture of one and then. So then Jan came up with a couple of different. Ideas and.
The middle one is the one he's recommending as historically accurate for the pictures.
It did seem a little expensive, but again, even if we were to make one, if he's surviving with one, he may not want to put it up.
Yeah, I opened my mouth in the email, so what I, all I was seeing was the three templates laying on a piece of. Flat stock. I didn't know, I forgot about the balls and all that, it's nothing we want to tackle, if it had been just cutting out the template, John was capable, but.
Yeah, so I think his blow is at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty to take care of it, I think. I mean, at this point in time, we're not gonna hire a different contractor to go through and make this thing and put it up at the end of the. And then if it leaks or whatever, I, I make a motion that we approve Jan. Jan's design for the weather vane and. And approve the twenty-two fifty for the installation.
So moved. Aye.
It will have a copper coating on it, so it does look. Correct.
Consideration of proposal for roof replacement on Elijah, is it Elijah?
Elijah.
Elijah Cleveland Meeting House, formerly the Coventry Convention of Church.
We have a proposal before us, I'm gonna ask that you table this until next meeting. Because I got a call on Friday late that might come in with a low, lesser price than this.
What about my guy?
And your guy called me today and he may be more than those two, so.
I would not imagine, yeah.
Yeah, and I called Black River, they might get us a bid, but it's up in the air because the gentleman had fallen off a roof and he may not be doing roofs for a, a while.
So, I, I don't remember with it, who did I do? The name?
Uh, it wasn't Chester, it was a.
I haven't.
Yeah, he called and.
They, they weren't gonna be able to do it until, you know, the spring, but they were willing to tarp where it was leaking and. Prepare it, you know, so it won't leak this, this winter. Especially if you put that in the proposal, if you're not able to get here in order to at least seal it.
Yeah.
So, all right, let's table this, I made the motion that we table.
I was wondering. Do you guys feel if I, if we had a competitive quote in the next week, if it'd be worth just having a quick meeting to approve it or no, given the timelines?
They, all three people who've spoken to me, David, have said, yeah, they'll do it in December if we really, really want them to. But most of them had said, wouldn't you prefer to wait till spring?
Yeah, okay.
Is that the case with the current? Bid that we have in front of us?
Correct, it is for, that, they're the ones who had preferred spring day, Dave Barlow.
Thank you, over.
This video, there's no way they were gonna start, if we approved this, they'd do it next week.
Oh, no, they were not, they were, yes, they were December at the best.
If I could pop back in for just a second, I was, I was in the building today, I don't know if anybody else has been in there lately, but the. After the big rain, a lot of water came in, there's, there's a bunch of either plaster or. Years worth of paint, it's a little uncertain. That came off the, the wall that the water's washing down, so there is some, I guess, stepped up urgency in getting this at least temporarily patched. If we can possibly manage that, I understand, oh, the environment is not good for that at the moment, but if we can, that would be good.
Once we get the bids in, we can move forward with getting them to do some mediation, immediate remediation.
Well, since we have this one proposal here, I'd like you to reach out to them, just tell them. You know, we're waiting on a couple of the bids to come in, but one thing we, we'd like to know is, um. You know, if. If they, if they could do it this year and if they can't do it this year. Would they tarp the section of the roof?
Okay.
I mean, I understand that. She's gonna be a thief for that, but it's gonna be whatever they charge you by the hour plus. Tarp some, you know, so.
Other, yeah, supplies and expenses.
Okay. So, that. Out there, is sealed off, so it's, like, raining constantly, it's not, no, there's no water going in there. So where do they have to seal up, because it's open, there's a flat floor on the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go through a hatch and then the hatch closes above it, so.
Because the belly, yeah, just has a string that goes through and the rest of it is just flat. It's essentially a mini roof up there.
I wasn't there.
Oh, I was scared, it was, that's, it was moving, that, that place is old.
I'm climbing up the little, it was rickety friggin' line at that Albans Church. When you pop through a little scare, you pop open the hatch and there's a bunch of pigeons in there, they're flying, they don't know how to get out. Right, David?
What was that?
Oh, the church up in the steeple.
Oh, is it spooky up there?
A little spooky.
Yeah.
A little poopy too.
Yeah. Number ten, consideration of the proposal for line striping on Coventry Station Road. Dave, you wanna talk about this a little?
Well, I haven't spoke to Trevor since we had that email exchange because I. Misheard him or misunderstood him on that. And the price I orally stated in the meeting was different than what he had actually said. So he's got his prices here, let me pull them up.
We have it in front of us.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up for me.
Have you talked to Jason? I see they painted the new one prior.
The new payment for the state?
Yeah, must be they're gonna.
I almost wonder if that's part of Pike's contract, I'm not sure how that works. But I mean, if you guys want to approve, Trevor.
We approved it for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we're way over on that.
Which of these roads are more important to get done next year or to choose?
Well, both of them are very important, Alderbrook's, you know, your highest traffic road, but it does have a semblance of a stripe on it left. But Coventry Station, it'd really be nice to get something on there. You know, it's just a travesty that the state of Vermont isn't stepping up to the plate and taking care of the responsibilities for the second year in a row on this. We shouldn't be paying for this, but. Think we're in a situation where we can put. People in front of money a little bit. So what do you guys see and what would it be without?
Coventry Station is thirteen thousand twenty dollars.
I'm good either way, guys, I, I can't see spending the extra on Alderbrook this year, I mean. And we'll just, and just have to explain to people that this isn't our responsibility to begin with, but.
Well, I mean, how, what's the weather?
Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna get it done anyway, I mean, we might get some good days, I mean.
Four is three degrees.
Supposed to be above average to the end of November. CAX.
Do you know what kind of warranty comes down to with the line striping, what if we pay twenty grand and they're gone after this winter? Like, because he did it too late and it wasn't dry, I mean, what, is, they guarantee him for?
No, I mean, it's not guaranteed and we shouldn't put that pressure on Trevor, I mean, it's not, his. This is, like I just said, I mean, this is a state of Vermont's agency of transportation failing to meet their obligation to the towns. This is something that is done yearly for towns, line striping. But they haven't, they haven't stepped up to the plate for the last two years.
What if they told you when you passed?
What's that?
What if they told you when you passed, we'll get to it?
No, I don't think it's, uh. I mean, I'm not necessarily blaming, I'm not blaming local tax. They can't get the guys to get here and get it done.
Yeah, cause it's not them doing it, it's, they contract that out, okay?
Yeah, they contract with these guys and this is supposed to be, you know, through AOT, they're supposed to be doing all that class two roads.
And it's the darker, it's the older, the newer, so it's not.
And it does have a, like David said, a semblance, right out there.
That's thirteen, thirteen thousand twenty? Coventry Station was ten thousand five sixty and then. You know, why don't we, why don't we make a motion to approve it all, but you talk to, you talk to Monte and just. Have him do whatever you think first, the most important, and then. If he's not gonna get them done, you know, we only can do one. Whatever one you want.
Where was this gonna come from, roads?
Yeah.
Yes. There's plenty in there.
Oh, we're short ever, we're short to get the cleanings done, we're gonna get done, we're gonna get, we're short at fifty or eighty thousand dollars to do a visual cleaning, but it's counting. What if somebody's gonna let us know, check the money we have and we're gonna put it into these funds? So David, your call, it's up, you know, I, I'm either way on these type of things.
I'll, I'll take another look at the Alderbrook, but I think we should, I think we should focus, and I hate to even say it, I think we should focus on. Coventry Station. Which could come back to bite us because if they are gonna get here, if the AOT is gonna get here, that's the only one that they're gonna paint. They weren't gonna paint Alderbrook anyway. I don't know if you'd seen that email. Because of the way it was going, they, they were only gonna do the roads that were paved this year. Let me reach out to Jason once again in the morning. I know he's gonna get sick of hearing from me, but.
We can have a special meeting to approve this, if, if, if. If we want to do that, why don't we table it, we're gonna have this, we can have the. Church proposals.
Sure.
All right, so if, if you down here, we can all, we're gonna table this line striding, striping and to get Ned some more information.
Hey, guys.
Yeah.
Do you really think that's a good idea to wait another two weeks?
I don't know, we're gonna do a special.
Special meeting, or we could approve, we can approve the Coventry, or we can vote on approving Coventry Station portion of this. Subject to your discussion with AOT.
Why don't we do that, why don't we approve like fifteen grand or something?
Do we wanna do the whole thing so that Oliver Road could at least get done, since we know that wasn't getting done and the Coventry Station portion would be. Depending on AOT? Unity, so.
I think it'd be better, like, I think David's implication is, approve for fifteen K. And then wait on Alderbrook and see where the state ends up and go from there.
Well, the state's already not gonna do the Oliver. That's, that's my point, the state's already not doing Oliver Road, so we can vote on the whole thing. Do Oliver Road, as we know, that's not being done.
Right.
And then. Do the station. Do the station, if we find out that AOT is not gonna end the theme. If we do fifteen grand, we're not gonna cover the station, we're not gonna cover the station and Oliver. Okay, I make the motion that we approve nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For Frank line striping with the contingency of Mr. Gallup talking to AOT and reading to see if. They're gonna do the station road this year, if not, then we'll have Frank line striping do it.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have I got there yet? Oh, oh, I skipped it. Let's just, we might as well keep going. Um. Other business, okay. Certificate of appreciation from, from the Vermont Secretary of State, Brad Maxwell, recognizing his long service.
It arrived last Wednesday. I have a frame and I will hang it up tomorrow. Yeah, I did. Thank you to Phil for my engineering skills. I have, they were not as well for, but yes, they'll be. And he will, because we have an even number there, I'll set him off, you know, at the end, right at an appropriate place for his use of service.
We had moved public comment to five A at the beginning of this meeting and I, I skipped over it. So do we have any public comments before I move on?
I have an other business, if that's okay, Chair.
Sure.
Okay, I have no public comment. I prefer to do it under other business so it hits the minutes.
We're in another business and we're going with all the comments, so.
Okay, so is this me then?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'm not quite sure how to say this, so I'm just gonna say it the best way I guess I can. Um, so my other business has to do with Casella's leach aid permit. Has any member of the town actually read this permit?
I have not, I don't see that.
I haven't either, other than the first couple of lines.
No, I didn't read the whole thing. I glanced through it and I did read the article that you sent us. By email, we about PFAs and CFOs. I found that very interesting.
So, so in regurgitating my hesitation, um, I was, I don't, I don't, Casella's not going anywhere and they're great partners to our town. However, they, um, make up the rules as they go. And I think that that leaves the citizens out and I take this to the state level. And so that's kind of why I'm bringing it back to you because the town does have um, liability to do with the landfill. That's obvious. We host them. We have an agreement about it. Um, but I think that this permit is pretty significant to our town in particular because I have asked it, asked previous times for, I, I can't, I've lost track of how many times I've asked about what the pilot program is gonna be for the pre-treatment, which the pre-treatment is enclosed in this permit, which is three dash 1406. Um, and I think that it's very telling when Casella continually says, no, they're not gonna disclose what's in this. They're not gonna disclose what, where the pilot program is gonna be. And the fact that A and R isn't disclosing it either and saying, um, it's a blank, basically a blank permit. I sat through a two-hour meeting where I listened to Canadian legislators. I listened to citizens from several towns. I listened to activists as well as attorneys say that this permit is basically incomplete. And A and R, y- y- you know, and they didn't even send anybody from the solid waste district to this meeting that the Canadian legislators were at, and I found that very appalling. Um, I did say that I believe this permit is a flugazy, which it's crazy, it's fake, and you aren't even allowed to ask questions. But they want you to give your comment about this permit. That's vague and incomplete. And left solely at the hands of Casella to come up with whatever they decide. And I, I think that it's imperative that the town starts paying attention and taking a stand. And I think that the town needs to also have somebody that sits through all of these meetings who is delegated to sit on the Oversight Committee, who shows up and engages with the state and reports back to the town and reports back. So we have a voice here. It, it, it's just alarming to me that there's international voices and attorneys and we never have anybody at the table. I literally said to the Agency of Natural Resources that their meeting was a flugazy and that I seen through it. How do, how do we sit there and say that we're gonna allow pre-treatment site in Coventry? And they're gonna truck in all of their leach aid from New Hampshire and wherever else they want? The Canadians are upset. They have a valid reason. The Canadian legislators are asking our elected officials to go over there to listen to their constituents. I have carried my, my own family's water, carried it for three years. It is not fun. And when PFAS is involved, there's huge liabilities and this is a very emerging unknown. And I think we really, really, really need to pay attention. Because even if we're not, it's, it's like we're giving silent consent and we're not, we're just not engaged at all. And I think that it's really important. And I would encourage, I want this on there just as me saying this, and I'm gonna throw this out to you guys. I would encourage the selectmen to send a letter, a comment saying that you do not support the new permit until information is disclosed about the pilot program. I think that could have serious implications on our town and our liability. And, and that's, and, and it's, it's my opinion that I am asking the Select Board to send a letter saying that you do not support the permit as written. You can say no, that's fine. You don't have to agree with me, but I want it known on record that I think that the town should say no and not support this permit. And take the stand to say we need information.
Did you get a response back from?
We have no liability. Brian said that.
Regardless of the liability, we, like, I'm not in favor of bringing more poison into the town. Like, we're not stopping the amount of garbage that comes into this town, up to 600,000 tons, but, but possibly you could get involved in direct support of not, you know, not bringing leach aid, you know, you know, in, into the landfill.
I haven't paid enough attention to understand what's in that permit, you know.
So in the permit, we have a copy of the, the permit, but it doesn't say much information at all, Martha, is what you're saying?
So yes, there, there were several attorneys that talked about it. Everybody said there was nobody that said that, that they were okay with not knowing what was going on. Honestly, it's, it's like absolutely incomplete, like it makes absolutely no sense. I thought I was actually missing documents and was told, no, you actually have the correct thing. And it's just missing it. There's, it's just blank. And I mean, they're not even telling us where they're gonna cite this pre-treatment facility, but they're gonna give the permit for the pre-treatment facility.
Is that a permit?
That permit includes the pre-treatment. The permit should actually be, one should be talking about where the leach aid is going and then the pre-treatment to, to remove the PFAS. So they combined the permits two into one and are just kinda, and it's vague. There's information completely missing out of it. And I thought it was me, but everybody that spoke even said it. The conservation law firm actually spoke about it, the attorney for that. The, uh, both of the Canadian legislators talked about missing information. And the Canadians are not gonna support leach aid being treated in Coventry. It's right on South Bay. And there is water rights there. There is a water treaty between Canada and the US. So that's all I'm saying is, it, it needs some paying attention to. And, and if A and R is gonna just push things through, somebody has to pay attention. And by us not saying anything, the town, I mean, not saying anything, you're saying it doesn't matter. You're just going along with Casella. Somewhere along the line, we have to take a stand somewhere.
Well, I mean, I, I think, Martha, you're correct. We do need more information on this because if they're gonna build this pre-treatment facility that is gonna take out the CFOs and PFAs out of the leach aid. Um, and then, then the water is good. Are they still trucking the pretreated leach aid off-site to like Mount Pelear or somewhere? Or what happens to it? What happens to the tree?
There would still be bio solids. They would still, they would have to pre-treat it to try to get as many of the PFAS chemicals out. Right now, Vermont actually only requires you test for five, but there are thousands of them and they're emerging and they stay forever. So you can't actually ever completely filter them out, but you can dilute them enough that they don't cause the cancer, the heart, the thyroid diseases. So there's no actual, like, science of it yet. So that's what the state is trying to, to get Casella to do. And Casella, it seems to everybody is gonna do it in Coventry. Because nothing is disclosed. And when I point-blank ask, I'm told, no, you're, it's, it's closed lift. Like, I called Casella out at this meeting. I was like, I've been told no three times, twice in Coventry Town meetings. Remember when I asked? They told us no, they weren't gonna tell us what they were doing?
Was it Joe? Was Joe there at the meeting?
Um, it was the water guy that Joe brought with him the second time. But Joe, the first time Joe said no, and Jeremy both said no, that they couldn't disclose it yet. That it would come out in the permit, wait for the permit. It's not in the permit. There's nothing in that permit about it.
All right, so I'm gonna have Ned have Casella come to our next meeting.
So the comments close at, um, the comments for the permit close November 8th. But also the other thing is, all of the leach aid is going to Mount Pelear right now and Mount Pelear citizens stood up at that, at their last town meeting, at their last council meeting and said they, they weren't okay with it going there. So Mount Pelear is also waking up. There's already a moratorium in Newport until 24 or 26. I can't quite remember. Um, so where is it gonna go if it doesn't go there? You're gonna have, they're gonna have to truck it all the way to New York. So, and the more trash they put in there, the more leach aids made. So, you know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know enough, but I know enough that I'm concerned and, and I am concerned about the repercussions. And I don't think that, you know, given permits where you don't understand that are completely blank sheets of paper and saying, okay, let us know what you come up with in my backyard, when I've already carried my water for three years, I'm not okay with.
I understand. Um. What do you think the best way for us to proceed? Like, we, we should talk to Casella and we should talk to Jared and get more involved. I mean, I I I'm interested in finding out what's going on and voicing our opinion. I mean, I can't, I I don't have enough information to make.
I agree, Scott, and that's what I'm saying. Like, we don't have enough information to give an opinion. And my opinion is I'm highly concerned and I don't agree with giving somebody a blank piece of paper and saying I'm okay with it. So that, that's exactly what I'm saying. That's just like, the town should also have somebody that also sits on the landfill oversight committee and reports back to the Select Board. They go to the, they go to the water meetings. They go to Mount Pelear. They go wherever they have to go.
I agree with that, Martha. Okay. Why don't you, why don't we talk tomorrow, Martha? I'll give you a call or you give me a call.
Sounds good. I'm available after 11:00.
Yeah, I'll be available like anytime after 1:00. So let's, let's touch base tomorrow and we'll see what, what ideas we can come up with and then I'll talk back with Ned and if we need to have a special meeting. It sounds like we're probably gonna have a special meeting next week.
Thank you. I appreciate you listening and understanding my concerns.
I would say we should do 48 hours just as courtesy, but we can.
We'll find out. Maybe we'll ask Casella to come and ask them what's going on. What is this? What, what are you thinking you wanna do?
Right.
Obviously, leach aid is a problem for them to get rid of. So I could see if I owned a waste facility, maybe I'd wanna make a treatment facility, make the leach aid better.
Yeah.
But what impact does that have on us? Do really we want 100 million gallons of shit?
Just, yeah.
Does it go down through the landfill and gets filtered and then they get the bottom again and just keep running it? But it just, does it go nowhere? They just pipe it from the bottom into the top and they just continue the cycle and they're like, oh, we can get.
So, so that's what I, that's kind of what I was imagining, exactly what you said, but it's gotta, they obviously collect it in liners and then they hold, they, they actually, what they currently do is put it in holding tanks and then the tanks actually bring it to the water treatment facilities that process it. They don't filter it. They process it and release it. So, and basically the state says that it's all going to Mount Pelear right now, but like I said, the citizens were like, yeah, we don't want it no more. So I don't, I don't know. It, I, I, and, and I think that there's like four different methods that I've heard of. It, but most of them are out in California. Oregon's got the same problem with landfills and so I, I think Oregon's kind of where I try to get my best information, but there's just no technology. So, I mean, I understand it's gonna be, you know, something new, but at least disclose to us and at least tell us where. Like, we have, absolutely have a right to know that. And especially if they're gonna put a, like a treatment facility like Pedro has in Newport over there in, on the site. Where, where is that gonna fit in? How is that gonna work?
No. All right, so we'll have a discussion tomorrow and then we'll, we'll gather up some information and, and we'll, uh, we'll most likely have a meeting next, in a couple of three days and see if we can get Jeremy and
Go with Friday, yeah.
Joe in here to let, let us know what's going on. We can voice our opinion.
All right.
Okay, thank you. And then, like you were, I've read the planning commission's minutes in the last meeting.
Yes.
They were talking about the ordinance during a survey, bringing it up for discussion at town meeting. Yes, sir. My opinion, and this can be discussed however, is like I've said it to you outside of meetings, whether it is, I think we need to have two articles on meeting. One with whatever the planning commission comes up with for a new warrant, so what they've come up with. They have one before.
Right.
I, another one was contingent on the first one. I think we discussed that this could work, though. As contingent on the first one, it has, my, my two biggest ones that needs to be added to the current one is time and date. And speed.
Speed.
Speed. Cause it's, it's, it's. I don't, I don't think there's a speed limit posted. I think it's posted on there, so. I would like to see, and this can be brought up to, it sounds like you're probably going.
A little bit of something, yes.
Um. Have them come up with a stricter one instead of putting it.
Okay.
And then we have a second one that's contingent on if the first one passes or not with dates, times, should match up with this clause in my opinion. And I don't know if we can, I don't, this is just me stating it, so whatever we have to do. And the speed limit.
Okay.
And then if either one of those pass, the current, the current one stays.
Right.
Yeah, we're not gonna make a lot of changes to it because the town already approved it, so. We need to have, it needs to be in town meeting, in my opinion. I don't, it, it needs to be taken care of, get on our, on the warning and be in town meeting for the special and, or just have one there. And.
So I'm having a hard time here. And are we talking about the, uh, town meeting?
We're talking about having the planning commission make the proposal in different stages, so it's on the warrant for town meeting. So at town meeting, there's really not gonna be any discussion, I don't believe, on that. There can be discussion on it. And we can go on the three changes or three different ways the ordinance should be written. And then it can be.
Martha is correct. It should be yes or no. There should be
Yeah.
one ordinance, that's second.
Yeah.
So the low, the low, like low medium high.
There's strict, there's stricter ordinance. And then there's only two articles. The stricter ordinance, the one that I said with date, time and speed is contingent on the first one passing or not.
Right.
And that one doesn't pass, the one that's in place now stays.
Exactly.
And there could be discussion, just like any other article, but I think it needs to be on town meeting, so it can be taken care of and that. What I would like you to check out is if we still have to play by the number of day rules with that. Um, cause there's that 90-day rule. On if there's, if we can do an ordinance in this direction without like, without us having to say yes and then it goes out for.
So the. So the ordinance should take townwide vote. If you change an ordinance, it should take effect sixty days after the vote.
So it'd be, it still has that same day thing as the did the last time and we just did it.
So your warning process is on your warning with your questions for your town meeting. So you don't, so that you've already warned it and everything, but once they have sixty days to appeal it, basically to protest and take you to court or you know, petition to have it changed. But the sixty days, you cannot get away with it. It's a required sixty days. That's the due process.
And that's even, that's even if the town. Yeah, it worked the same way as the last time.
So I'm confused. What are we talking about?
The ATV ordinance, David.
So why do we, why do we keep letting this fester? We have so few complaints this year. I don't understand why we why we keep bringing this up and bringing uh bringing all this anger out, and we only have three complaints all summer.
The planning commission is working on coming up with a amended ordinance. They have been, they are still going to. It needs to be brought up because we told it would be brought up. And my thoughts in how to take care of this is you bring it up and it goes to town meeting and we vote on it then, and then you have the same thing. You have two different options and how it's voted is voted.
I think we failed the uh, this is just my opinion. I think we failed a planning commission on that. Um, it was a townwide vote and it was overwhelming. Uh, I think we put them in a bad spot. I just uh I think, I think the lack of complaints and how well it went this year, um just doesn't warrant uh slapping in the face of people that overwhelmingly approved it.
Well, we agree with you, David R. I agree with you a hundred percent, but there is some statewide regulation that we wanna put into the ordinance.
Yeah. So, you know, like, did we have just one adoption this year and basically that was something the state had put in? Did we do that this year?
You haven't done anything to the ordinance since we did it a year and a half ago, whatever it was. So that that was the thing. It came up with the planning commission and then it kind of got tabled because we said, well, it's kind of too late now for this season. So that's why I'm bringing it up again to go through that and get whatever the state has. And then I think we really need to have date and times in there, but that'll be put on the, that's where the two articles come into play is the planning commission did work and did some meetings and listened to people. I'm hoping it'll go better this way.
Yeah. Well, so we got time anyway, cause this is gonna be uh something we're gonna talk about putting on a warrant.
Yes, I would also add in that we have a clear statement that all roads are in Coventry. Our own books is always
That would be, that one with the date and time.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we got time to work on that. Any other business? Number twelve, table matters still under consideration. So Pine Hill Road, drainage engineering and paving. You're still waiting for that engineer?
David was gonna speak to the gentleman, but we're still waiting for him to get back to us.
No way to what?
The uh, the gentleman you were gonna talk to on Pine Hill Road, I'm getting an uh engineering stuff done?
Yeah. Haven't heard from him. I I, he's an extremely busy man. I know uh basically all I got to tell you is he told me when he comes up to finish up his project in Derby, he's gonna call me and we're gonna go look at it.
The lighting in Lady Bird Park.
So that has been replaced. Have you noticed it tonight? Or it wasn't dark when you came in?
The the single lightness there. I, it wasn't dark yet.
Yeah, looks pretty good. It's still darkness behind the tree.
I do think we still need to talk about the lamp post though. But we do I I, so I came, I came back from Groton the other day and there's the parking lot in King Bridge. I was trying to pull it up on Google Street or Google the street view and it doesn't have it in there, but Even if we have to pay for it. Painting line on the street that we're not supposed to. I mean, I think paint, paint, putting some nice light posts in that parking lot would be nice.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we're gonna find more out about that and then That's a staple. It's gonna be able to find out what those are and say, hey.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll, Jason's always pretty good about knowing exactly what's going on.
That's the, that's what we want. Okay, Australian ballot article for town meeting.
Still gonna be there. Just a reminder that it is still gonna be there.
The other other thing, um going back we were gonna talk about, and we need to put this on, I think, the town ordinance, the the speed. Remember, we were gonna review? The speed ordinance in the town and
Yes.
Re-adopted or rewrite it. Um, so that should be at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so then in the beginning, we added to twelve, we added D and E. So select board, discussion on personnel matters, uh executive session.
Scott, can I just run over some of the questions for um town meeting for the warning? Before you move on?
For the warning for
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just wondering, um, are we gonna put the, um, are we gonna ask the voters, are we gonna stay listers or are we gonna go pay to Sessor?
Oh, I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Well, well, I'm asking because some of it is kind of important, because if you don't agree to some of the questions, then the people have the ability to petition to ask you to put it on there, and it doesn't have to, it doesn't trigger a special meeting or anything. So I I I'm happy to write them out and we can do it later, but I do have like ten of them I I'm interested in knowing about.
When does a petition need to be done to get an article about the town?
You'd have to ask Deb about that one, but it's
I'll probably have to go back and just verify that again to be more accurate. Um, but definitely, no, you've gotta give the residents their ample notice that if they do want something to be placed on there, it's gotta be a certain amount of days before the article is actually done up that way, before anything is done or printed or whatnot. That information is out to them, so I can actually look that up and get back to you for Thursday.
Yeah.
That way we have a definitive answer for all the different aspects.
And it's on the uh, the LCT calendar that's on my wall.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Do we have the verbatim of going into executive session, like article?
VSA one, three, one. What are you trying to go in for? Legal matters? Okay, so just say in accordance with one VSA three, uh, V, one V SA three, one, three for personnel matters, finding premature public knowledge puts the town at a disadvantage.
Thank you, Martha. Mr. Gallup, you're
Our motion that we go into executive session for the VSA.
And in this, Mr. Gallup, was it just the select board?
Yes, for both.
Just a slot board for two personnel matters, so we're gonna go in and we're gonna come out and go back in?
Do we have to do that if we're not making a decision?
If you don't make it, I see no way.
Cause I don't, I think Ned mentioned that, that we can't make a decision just because it wasn't warned.
Wasn't noticed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we're just going to one.
I made the motion to make a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Coming out of executive session, uh, no, no decisions have been made at this time.
Yeah, no.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think we're on to warrants, right? Deb's favorite part. Something's just not adding up on this.
Deb's not home right now.
This is the credit cards. I have, everything is checked off. The seventy-one eighty-eight? She has seventy-one eighty-eight right here. This is a receipt fifty-four, fifty-one domain. So that one's been, she mentioned that, but this seventy-one eighty-eight is also not this, like, all that's here is seventy-one eighty-eight on but this domain registration is fifty-four, fifty-one here. Somebody's email, but I don't, there's there's nothing, there's nothing here that matches. I need to
Hey, guys. You going through uh orders?
Yeah, warrants.
Yeah, you got any questions for me? I I'm gonna head out.
I don't think so.
Alright.
David Barlow.
Yes.
You said for that maritime thing, you, when, when do you think you'll let me know? You'll let me know when they can pick it up? For the boat.
It depends on when I can get in to sign it.
Okay.
Hang on a second. I'll look at my calendar.
Alright. That's gonna find it.
Which she must have. Well, unless she was just going off the credit card.
Depends the receipt, but I need to give her like, it's the receipt for you.
She has the credit card.
Bill, I got us actually two two domains. I got the Oregon and the co- because the customer's available. I got it, just in case.
Hey, Scott, I think it'll be Wednesday.
Alright, you're gonna come in Wednesday and you'll get it to Ned?
Yeah, I'll try and make it Wednesday morning.
Alright, just, yeah, just let me know.
I could drop it off.
Well, I don't need it, but they'll come pick it up. I don't, whoever they are, they just reached out to me. My dad's involved with the boat and helping them out. I'll just tell them Wednesday. Wednesday, call around eleven AM.
Yeah, just to give us some space.
Go to the dot com or
But the uh, some of the other Coventry dot stuff, had some school stuff there, so I wanted to give us some space. Yes, we do.
I'm gonna motion to approve the warrants. Something given to us?
So move. Cause you could have, like we had, to say yes, because you do a motion and a second, and then you do a vote and the vote is like to say yes and not say no, but if if two say no and one says yes, the motion is dead. What if you don't get to make the motion? So move.
If you don't get a, if you don't get a second, you don't get second.
Okay, so I got the minute minute here for
Actually, just while you're looking, we had our first person to be rent the space. And she rented it for Halloween night, and then she came back a couple of days later and rented it for Thanksgiving Day. And then came back later that afternoon and did Christmas Day. And uh, the uh, Pycon wrestling will be here uh Wednesdays and Friday, and then starting in January. They're getting together their stuff.
On that, in the contract, I heard, I think, it's, they have to clean up after themselves, right?
Correct. They have to re-capture, they have to loop it as it is presented to them when they have to.
Guess we have two minutes then. Or how long do we have now?
The uh, the the only kicker of the whole big stock is they're still deciding about some crap. It's just like
They're making the rules. Well, that's kind of probably what they're doing with weight forty-three or a lead shade. They don't know.
They, they're making up as they go, why it's like, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's a toe at the board, it's like on the trailer down the road. And there's still something on the way there. It's just like, it's crazy.
Hey Ned, this is David. Did I hear you say, tell me today that the senior meal is canceled for tomorrow?
The senior meal is canceled for tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I will come in tomorrow and sign that check.
Alright. Well, I'm gonna be working for Pope also tomorrow, assuming that I still feel like, as I do today.
Okay. If you can leave it somewhere where I can get it? If you leave the folder on the, on the big, on the table in Deb's office?
Yes, I'll put it on your desk.
But.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
For, 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 for. So move. All in favor? I, I. Make a motion, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion again. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'll be second to motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I, I.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Are we, are we here Wednesday night? Is it this week?
Track, there's a BCA meeting.
Oh, Thursday night. You mean for BCA?
Yeah, Thursday at five thirty.
Thursday at five thirty for that lab. And I might actually try getting in contact with, uh, Mike Markot to see if he would just like to come because, he was probably on, the BCA board the last time when legislation went through and did that, so he may be able to provide some, guidance or information as far as, to be able to answer some of your questions, because I don't really think anybody of us on that board really has enough, understanding on that whole process, except for they just went through, resegregated some of the towns, clumped us differently, which we are now, grouped with other towns who we weren't grouped with before, but they're trying to reach that target number of about forty-eight hundred, um, residents per each one of those districts. So like I stated, technically it shows us moving from, um, district number two to district number five for Orleans. So I'll probably send him an email, just see if he doesn't mind to come and, um, just speak or send an email as far as something maybe that they did the last time they went through this process and just to help, you folks and us understand what that may mean, so. But that's it.
Alright. Thank you, everyone.